The June 26, 2025 special session of the Clarksville City Council is now called to order. Chaplain Sylvia Martinez with the Clarksville Police Department will serve as our chaplain of the day. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Haywood. Ladies and gentlemen, I invite you to please stand. And chaplain Martinez.
Good evening. Please join in prayers that fall on us. Dear heavenly fathers, we come before your presence seeking your divine wisdom. Guide this council, our Lord, as deliverate over the cussing issues of our city. Empower their discernment, illuminate their judgments and plans with your celestial insights. May this steward this civic responsibility diligently and create a beacon city for all. With hopeful hearts, we seek your grace for better judgment, knowing wisdom lies beyond measure in you. Inspire our city leaders as they can be. Grant them the courage to embrace innovation and pioneer pathways to progressivism. Enlight their hearts with the flame of action and determination to enhance our community's prosperity in all they do or decide here today. Thank you for your presence. Thank you for your anointings. Thank you for being here with us. May you be reflected and glorified first and foremost. I ask you all this in the holy name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, please register your attendance. Madam Clerk, take the roll, please.
All members are present with the exceptions of Councilman Peters, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Chikinab.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First and only item on our agenda is second reading of the budget. Ordinance 103, 2024-25, an ordinance amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2024-25 and adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2025-26 for the governmental funds for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025 and ending June 30, 2026. I'll entertain a motion and a second. Motion been made and properly seconded. Any comment or question regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All members, please cast your vote. Every member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Six yes, four no, zero abstain.
Ordinance 103 is adopted. We're now ready for public comment. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Seeing none, the purpose for which this special session of the Clarksville City Council having been accomplished, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Without objection, we are adjourned. See you at 4:30.
And everyone, welcome to the June 26, 2025 City Council Executive Session. Before we get into the Planning Commission Report, we have a presentation by our city attorney and by our city clerk regarding the Retail Liquor Store Certificate of Compliance Lottery process. So, we will turn it over to Ms. Canfield and Mr. Bittner. Need a little walk-up music?
I was singing in my head. You're welcome.
Okay, we'll split this up into two different parts. I'll just take the first section here, and then Lisa will take the second section and answer all your questions. Okay? Maybe, maybe not? Yeah, okay. Yeah, everyone over there.
Tough crowd.
Yeah. Okay, so, November 7th of 2024, with Ordinance 1142324, we amended the Title II Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter 2 Intoxicating Liquors. The first thing we did, we changed the definition. The state changed their definition of alcoholic content by weight for liquor, so we changed ours in 2201 to match exactly what Tennessee State does in TCA 573101. We did that by reference. We then looked at Section 2205, the restriction on the number of liquor stores. Prior, we had one liquor store for every 6,000 residents in the city, and we were adding two liquor stores on every even-numbered year. What we did back on November 7th, we combined, I believe, the Councilman Markey, Councilman McLaughlin, and Councilman Wanda Smith ordinances into one. So, we lifted the limit on the number of liquor stores to the maximum number allowed under the latest U.S. Census data, which was 166,722 divided by the 6,000 residents. It gives us 27 stores that we're now going to be able to have in the city of Clarksville. Section 2207 was reviewed also. I believe this was Councilman Markey, Councilman McLaughlin worked together, and we amended to state that no liquor store could be closer than 500 feet to a school, park, or religious institution, and no liquor store should be located closer than 1,500 feet to another liquor store. And then, finally, we looked at Section 2214, and because we were getting a great number of liquor store applications, which was tying the clerk up, and we decided to add an application fee, which we did, $250 per applicant for a liquor store. Okay? I will turn this over now to Ms. Camphill.
Okay, so I'm gonna go over the process a little bit and explain how we came to where we are now. A notice was published in the paper beginning May 1st for three days. Then, the application period ran from May 5th through May 27th. On the 28th, I took all of the applications and processed them for completeness. I also went through GIS. Sunny Emmert in the Street Department created a map in GIS which tied in all of the distance locations that you added. So, we went through and pulled all of those. And then, on June 11th, I sent those to Building and Codes and CPD to do the background checks, and then to do an additional zoning check, just to make sure that they're zoned for liquor. And then, those applications came back. That left us with, I think, about 66 applications in total, and those applicants were notified on June 23rd. And so, now, we're gonna go into the lottery process on Tuesday. And so, that, how that works is that I take separate pieces of paper, which I've already done. They're all the same size. They have the applicant's name and address. We put them in an opaque box. It's literally a box. And so, we'll have Stephanie and Lee Harpel will be here on Tuesday. They're gonna do the lottery. So, they'll be pulling the names out of the box. We'll be pulling 11 names. Now, there are, if you notice on the spreadsheet, there are multiple applications with the same address. And so, it's gonna be a first-come, first-served. And so, they'll pull a name out and then set that aside. If they pull another name out with the same address, they'll go to the next. So, once an address is pulled, the remaining addresses are voided. So, it's first-come, first-served. We figured that was the easiest way to be fair, because it is location-based per the Tennessee Beverage and Alcohol Commission. And then, you will vote on a resolution. You have to vote on the resolution for the 11. Rather than doing, the first time we did this, we had, I don't know, we had like 20 resolutions. We had to vote up or down. We now have one resolution approving all 11 certificates of compliance, so you'll have to vote on that. And then, after that, I'll follow up with them and give them their certificate of compliance, and it'll go on to the state. Your turn.
I just wanna add one more thing. When the certificate of compliance is issued by the city, the applicant has 120 days to process that with the state to get their liquor license. If they do not do so, then the City Council can revoke that certificate of compliance, and we can issue it to another applicant. Okay?
Any questions?
Questions? Councilman Brown?
So, those duplicate applications for the same address, I saw it had different business names?
Yes.
Is the applicant's different, or is it the same applicant using different names?
So, when I, when I went through and processed the applications initially, we will have had some applications from the same household, so multiple applications. Those were combined into one application. And so, the other applications are from different addresses, and I have no way to determine if they're family members or not. So, then those stayed in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Something I just thought of. Were you able to verify that they don't already have two existing certificates in the state?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, any other comment or question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Yeah, really, well done. Yes. Only in her head. All right. We're now ready for the Planning Commission Report. We'll get you pulled up on the screens here, Mr. Tyndall. All right, the first item is Item A, Ordinance 108202425. Mr. Tyndall?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. This is the report out of the Regional Planning Commission. Our first case is Z252025. This is currently a .44-acre parcel, currently zoned O1 Office District, and requesting to go to M1 Light Industrial District. It is an extension of the zoning classification. It's a parcel along the west frontage of Alpine Drive, approximately 420 feet south of West Dunbar Cave Road and Alpine Drive intersection. This is in Council Ward Number 9 and in our St. Bethlehem planning area. The applicant's statement is to better align with the surrounding M1 zoning and uses. On your screen there, that is our future land use map, which indicates the majority of that West Dunbar Cave area as what we refer to as commercial-industrial hybrid, so not manufacturing and industrial, kind of a step down from that. And one of the areas we're probably looking at with the zoning code is to really look at C5 and M1 uses going forward, and this is one of those reasons why we're looking at what's allowed in M1, C5, and O1. Here's your current zoning map. You can see the, in the pink there is O1, and in the gray is M1 uses in the, what we call the West Dunbar Cave Industrial Park. This area was zoned in 1995 and 1997. I believe in 1995, West Dunbar Cave did not fully connect to Trenton Road, and one of the requests was to create a buffer between Old Trenton Road and the industrial park at the time that was not constructed, and they built this O1 buffer. But as you see, over time, it's become dual-frontage lots on both of these roads, Alpine and Old Trenton Road. Here's the property in question. It's an existing building. It had a business very similar to the current business in there, and we've seen this a lot over the past year. As the Code Department has required use permits, it's caught a few interesting things that have gone on over the years. And though this was a legal business, when another person owned it, when this person came in and got their business license, it flagged it and said, "That's not an O1 use." And that's one of the reasons we did the use permits, and there's ways to clean it up, such as this with zoning changes. This person is a cabinet installer and does molding and trim and stuff like that. This is Alpine Drive. The property is on the left. It's just a metal building, like about every other building on that road. Department comments, we did not receive any department comments of concern. This would be going to M1. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the adopted Clarksville-Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. The adopted future land use opinion map identifies this as commercial-industrial hybrid, and M1 request aligns with the future land use designation. The proposed M1 Light Industrial appears to more align with the development pattern on the street frontage and the existing structure on the site than the O1 Office District, and no adverse environmental issues were identified as part of this zoning request. The Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Any comment or question regarding this case? Seeing none, we're ready for Item B, Ordinance 109202425. Mr. Tyndall?
Thank you, Mayor. This is Planning Commission Case Z262025, an application of Christian Innovative Enterprises LLC. The agent is Gary Vogren. This parcel is 11.16 acres. It's currently zoned AG Agricultural and is requesting R2A Single Family Residential District. It's a parcel of land that fronts the northern frontage of Kennedy Road at the Stone Bluff Way and Kennedy Road intersection. This is in Council Ward Number 12. This is in the North Clarksville planning area. The applicant's statement is, "The landowner wishes to apply for a rezoning from AG to R2A to allow for single-family residential lots, minimum 5,000 square feet, 40-foot width, while also preserving the family barn on site." Our future land use map, as you can see in the brownish color there, indicates this, a majority of this area has mixed use. This was done intentionally, as we knew the Spring Creek Parkway was coming through this area at the time, and you're only dealing with about three to four large property owners, even though the properties are fragmented a little bit. This is the same owners to, on the south there, where you see the hatched area, there was a mixed-use pud that came in about two years ago from the Christian family and was approved. They are, they cannot start construction until the finishing of the Spring Creek Parkway. Once the bridge is installed, they'll be able to start pulling permits, and this is just a remainder of their parcels. Some of the other property owners there include another family and two other families to the north and to the west. So, we look at the whole area as, has potential, but you have to work together, and we'll discuss that a little bit in our recommendation here. This is the property at the terminus of Stone Bluff, which is a about 1,000-foot length of road that goes through a small piece of a subdivision that, when Spring Creek Parkway came, it split that subdivision sort of north and south. You can see it right there, south of this. Kennedy Road is there. There is no intention to use Kennedy Road as the access point. Single-family against single-family, and the intention would be to use Stone Bluff out directly to Spring Creek Parkway. There's Kennedy in the other direction. It's currently just a field behind there. Northeast High School's right on the other side of that field. Department comments, there's no gravity sewer available in the area, but it can be extended. A traffic assessment was required. Some road improvements may be required. A previous study adequately addressed the overall impact of this development. By previous study, they mean when they did the planned unit development, they did include this property in the traffic study, since it was all under one ownership. The current proposal is a reduction from the assumptions in that study. At subdivision or site plan, improvements may be required to Kennedy Road. This will be evaluated based on a specific plan. No other department comments or concerns, and the school system listed their capacities at the northeast complex. Historical units would put this at approximately 51 units. The applicant estimates 44 to 49. They did mention trying to retain the family barn on site. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. The R2A Single Family Residential zoning classification is a gradual density increase from the adjacent R2 clustered subdivision, Eagles Bluff, to the south. As presented, this zoning case request affords an appropriate transition from the adjoining parcel of land. The future land use opinion map indicates this parcel to the east and to the west and to the north as mixed use. The fractured nature of the parcels in this area limit the mixed-use potential, and a master development plan that would combine adjoining parcels may unlock additional development potential. No adverse environmental issues were identified, and the Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Councilman Shakina, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. Mr. Tyndall, I have a few questions. Out of this 11.16 acres, about how many acres are we looking at not developing? Like you said, it's a field right now. It's pretty flat.
Yeah, I don't have that exact number.
Because I know it's not gonna be all of it.
You can see right on the far east side, there's a family barn on there.
Yes.
So, I would anticipate the majority of it will develop. They'll leave a parcel or two around the barn, to keep it that way.
And all of the traffic is gonna flow back out to Spring Creek?
Currently, the only connection right now for this property would be due south to Spring Creek Parkway, and Trenton Road is just off the screen to the east. We anticipate, as future parcels do develop to the north and to the east, there could be other connections to Merriweather or back to Spring Creek Parkway or to other roads in the area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have questions for Mr. Smith, if that's okay.
Okay, Mr. Smith? You're up. Councilman Lovato?
Thank you. I have three questions. The first one, I was a little shocked to see that there were no comments about drainage, because there's some water features on this property. Can you elaborate what the developer can or can't do to disrupt that or to cause flooding in the surrounding areas?
Sure. They'll get our, largely our general comments about water quality and that sort of stuff. There are two what look to be retention ponds on the parcel, and they'll have to largely design around those. We would prefer that they not touch those, but we'll see that as the site plan comes forward and we get through the rezoning phase. All of those subsequent phases, the Planning Commission will have, will have an opportunity to comment on.
Okay. My second question, in the comments, it says they may be required to do road improvements. Since they're not gonna disrupt Kennedy Lane, what kind of road improvements are you thinking they're gonna need to do?
Yeah, I don't know necessarily where that comment comes from, but I think we all know they're gonna turn right on Kennedy Lane if they're going to Trenton Road. That's what's gonna happen. So, I've told the development company, we had talked originally about some multifamily and some, some pud options out there, and now they've, they work with the Planning Commission to come back with this single-family option, but I've told them that, at the same time, Kennedy Lane may still need to be improved. We had to put down additional asphalt for the school system, because that's one of their, their bus options is to go that way. Now, folks are going, obviously to Wilmer Rudolph, I think they're gonna go through Stone Bluff and whatnot, but you've got the option to go through a couple stop signs and go through a neighborhood or hit Kennedy Lane, which is, you know, unobstructed, and get to Spring Creek. I think that they're probably gonna opt for the latter, so we're probably gonna require improvements at some point, depending on the breadth of development to Kennedy Lane as well.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, is kind of a unique one, and I don't know if you will know the answer to it. One of the long-term residents off of Kennedy Lane has said that there is a cemetery with some unmarked graves in this area. Do we know anything about that, and who is responsible for finding out and not disrupting them?
It's a tough call. Typically, when we see those, they are a separate parcel. They don't necessarily have ownership. We see those kind of as ghost parcels. The planning commission can speak to that. But I think it's part of their survey work. They would need to look through that and just clear. When Jeff speaks to environmental issues and those kinds of things, that's part of those surveys to look for any kind of, environmental includes historical or archaeological impacts as well.
Okay, but so we don't know?
I'm aware, no.
Typically, the state government, Department of Commerce and Insurance maintains a registry or a database of cemeteries, old and new. But some of them aren't on there because they're so old or unmarked. So that'd be the first place they'd have to look.
Yeah, I'll add to that, the cemetery comment. We get this comment quite a bit out in the county, more than the city. But family grave sites, unmarked graves, as you mentioned. We will sometimes go to the Archives Office and ask if they have any information as well. And they keep a pretty good list for the community. But I believe there's over five hundred countywide of small family cemeteries. This does not, to our knowledge, have one, but doesn't mean it couldn't. And if someone's saying that, I think when it comes time for a subdivision or site plan, we would ask them to look in that area a little further. If someone has, if they can narrow it to an acre or two, and they can go out there and walk it and find it, we would not have that disrupted during development phase. But this is the first we're hearing of this. We didn't get that, we didn't get that email. We didn't get that email, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. That's all I, I'm going to have more questions about that when we do more research, but thank you.
I also mentioned about Kennedy Lane. Right now, you can see to the east there, there's a farm field down where the Spring Creek is. And right now, Kennedy Lane, and there's one house down there, is the way to get down there. Should that ever be developed or something else, we, in talking to the street department staff, Chris Cowan and Joe Green, we could see a point where Kennedy Road actually gets abandoned or is no longer a public road. Maybe it's a walking path or a trail of some sort. But right now, due to farm traffic and the traffic for that home right there, we would leave Kennedy Road open to the public.
You've got a puzzled look on your face. You've had the floor.
The, the comment about abandoning Kennedy Lane or turning it, that.
Kennedy Road on.
Kennedy Road, sorry.
This side of.
Yes. Gets confusing. Not to be confused with the other one. Because there is, the neighbor who made the comment about the cemetery is the same one who lives there. There, it's a son and an elderly mother, and they're already having issues getting mail out there. I don't, who makes the call to abandon that road?
City Council.
We do.
Well, I will not be in favor of that when that happens.
Should they ever move, should it ever develop and develop those parcels? I think that would be the time we would look at it, but obviously, it's not now. We have to, we're going to leave Kennedy Road open for now.
I think that's going to, these comments specifically, I don't want them to be confusing. When we vote next week, this rezoning case, should it pass, will absolutely affect Kennedy Lane. And there are apparently no aspirations to close it at this time, so I don't know why we're discussing it. That's, that concludes my report.
Any other question regarding this case? All right, we're ready for item C, ordinance one-ten. Mr. Tyndall?
Caught up? Okay. This is Planning Commission Case Z twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, an application of Ransom Ritter Jr. This is a portion of a parcel. The acres that are requesting to rezone is two point six six acres. Currently zoned R-one, single-family, requesting to go to R-five residential multifamily district. The property is a piece of land that fronts the northwest intersection of Needmore Road and Thrush Drive. It's a large, single-family residential lot with a single-family home and associated accessory structures. This is in Council Ward number nine. It is in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area. Applicant statement is to do a multifamily development. This attempted to be rezoned in twenty twenty-two from R-one to R-five. They requested the entire parcel at that point. It's a little hard to see. There's a little triangular tail to the west that is also part of this parcel. They're leaving that R-one this time and requesting just the square you see to the east. That was recommended for disapproval and did not pass city council back in twenty twenty-two. Here's the future land use map. You can see some regional commercial in the orange, some more dense mixed residential neighborhoods in the dark yellow, and then the majority to the east and to the north is single-family suburban district. And the zoning out here pretty much closely matches what the future land use opinion is of this area. This is the property, Thrush Drive, Needmore Road on the left. There's the home on the site. And this is looking back towards Trenton Road. It does currently have a driveway on Needmore Road. I'll go over that in a minute. Looking back toward Thrush Drive, homes on the left. Street department said access, future access would be from Thrush Drive only. There are known drainage issues in the area. That was known, not no, drainage issues. No other department comments or concerns, and the Clarksville-Montgomery County School System provided their capacities at Glenell and Northeast Middle, Northeast High School. Historic estimates would put this at thirty-two units. Staff recommends disapproval. The request is not consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the adopted Clarksville-Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. The future land use opinion map identifies the parcel as suburban neighborhood, and the R-five residential district request does not align with the suburban neighborhood designation. The proposed R-five residential district is viewed as an intrusion into the established single-family residential neighborhood as it is a substantial increase in residential density and not in character with the surrounding low-density, single-family development pattern on the adjacent parcels. The city of Clarksville Street Department has indicated that there are known drainage issues that exist in the area. Any increased development potential of this parcel, to include single-family or multifamily, will require the developer to coordinate with the street department to address future drainage concerns. The planning commission also recommends disapproval.
Thank you. Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
I'd just like to say I also recommend disapproval on this. As this is in my ward and speaking with the neighbors, they would rather not have some townhomes come in right next door to them so they can look in the backyards of their homes. Along with the known drainage issues, this would make it even worse. You know, if you add three or four multifamily townhomes onto this property, that's more concrete, that's less grass, that'll absorb the water, which will make more runoff onto these families. It does not match the area at all. So it's an R-one area. With that acreage, how many acres, how many houses could they build in R-one in that? Kind of that, that area there?
Councilman, let me just see if I can get a little closer view without the color on there. It's not really the acreage that's the issue here. It's the width of the lots. Planning commission estimates five, maybe six lots with the current R-one designation that you could do there. Maybe one or two off Needmore, and the rest would be off Thrush Drive.
Which, compared to thirty-two, that's a big difference. And so, you know, I'd just let everybody know I'll be voting against this as my constituents and the neighbors there do not want this. And it is, you know, encroaching on the R-one because it is an R-one area. It's not apartments there. So I'd just ask for everyone to vote against this also.
Yeah, you can compare the average lot sizes in these pictures with what's on there and kind of visualize what that might be if you developed it out similarly.
Yeah, I was thinking about four or so. Thank you.
Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything that the councilperson from Ward nine just stated. When this came before the council, before, I was opposed to it. My opinion has not changed. I believe it was R-four, not R-five, but regardless, I was, my opinion hasn't changed either way on it. As he pointed out, that's a substantial difference from what is there, from what it could be with the R-one. And as you can easily see from the map that shows all the zoning, like he stated, I mean, this, this area right there is very evidently R-one. And actually, at the council meeting, it was, just making sure I'm correct, it was unanimously voted for disapproval. I believe it was that way last time as well. And I was also the one at the RPC meeting that made the motion. And I use the reasoning that the proposed R-five residential district is viewed as an intrusion into the established, single-family residential neighborhood directly from the RPC staff. So I appreciate that they were also opposed to it again as well, and I'll be voting against this. And I would encourage my fellow council members to do the same. Thank you.
Councilman Shakina, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, on this one, would an R-two or an R-two A be more consistent with the adopted Comprehensive Plan, or only just R-one, but we know not R-five?
You know, when we do this process, we use the term, we hit the pitch that's given to us. And the pitch that's given to us on this was R-five. We did not really evaluate R-two. So I'd have to go back and would look at it a little differently, as I think the street department and other departments might. So I can't speak for all the other departments or staff. But again, R-two is what we would call a step increase from R-one to R-two or R-one A. Honestly, though, with the width of the property and the dimensions there, I'm not sure you gain but maybe one or two parcels total if you do that rezoning change. Because it's not, it's not conducive to put a cul-de-sac in. It's not that kind of, you do all frontage lots. So you're already talking fifty to ninety feet wide for any of those zones.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions. I know, since R-five doesn't really come up here, just for the record, I guess, would you be able to tell us a little bit more on R-five?
R-five was developed probably about twelve or thirteen years ago in a response that R-four was not getting passed as often back then. And R-five is similar to R-four, that it is sixteen units an acre, but it only allows for horizontal construction. So townhouses, duplexes, or even single-family, but all on one common ownership of an HOA or a condo association. Sorry. It requires fifteen percent open space, which R-four doesn't. The setbacks are slightly different from R-four, but in the end, even though it requires, it allows up to sixteen units an acre, we historically see about twelve units an acre because of the open space. And then just the nature of having to build townhouses, which means you can't go vertical, you're going horizontal. So that's the two differences between R-four and R-five.
Okay. And then also, since this particular lot does have a history of trying to rezone about this, R-four, R-five back two years ago. Coming back now, do you guys, I guess, either advise them or like with how different of a jump in R-one in rezoning this is, like say, hey, this might not be the best?
We require all zoning applications to drop them off in person and have a conversation with us. This piece of property has actually been on the market for a while. We've received calls all the way from Nashville and Dixon of interest, and they're always like, "What can we do with it?" Well, I'm like, "Well, currently zoned, you can do this," or, you know, "You have the opportunity to rezone, but we would suggest you don't do that. Here's the history. Three years ago, it didn't pass. And here's what you'd be required to do, driveways off of Thrush," you know, the known things that we, we have out there. I will say just as a sidebar there, and this is for, especially for the new council members, there's a lot of zoning cases that you'll never see because we either talk people out of it. We're like, "Do you want to spend the time?" There's a year wait if you go and get denied. You know, you won't be able to rezone it for a year, and then they rethink it, or they'll bring it back in. That may be a lesser zoning. So that's a lot of times why you see it get a recommendation for approval from staff is because we've already worked with the engineer or the applicant to get to that point. I can speak to the previous case. The Christians wanted R-five, and we said, "I just don't think that will pass right now for you, and then you're going to wait a year, try R-two A, see if that passes, and then maybe try R-five again in the future." So they'll be here to speak on that next week, but that's just one of many conversations we have with landowners on any given month.
And then my last question here is that since it was mentioned that if it was developed with R-one, as it is R-one, and they could get maybe, maybe four, five, six lots, what does that process look like? Do they just drop in a site plan for you guys, or is it another application?
They would just bring in a subdivision, a couple hundred dollars and a couple copies of that subdivision. We would distribute it amongst all the city departments, see how they're laying out the lots, measure them, and then bring it to, something this small wouldn't even go to the planning commission. It would just go, and they'd get comments of what they'd have to fix. They'd have to install sidewalk now that that new ordinance passed. And driveway locations may be a comment. The gas and water may have a comment about water or hydrants or things. We'll pass along all the comments. Once they've turned those comments and new sheets and get the approval of the other departments, we'll then sign off on the final subdivision to where they can divide those lots.
Thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding this case? We're now ready for item D, ordinance one-eleven. Mr. Tyndall?
This is Planning Commission Case Z twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. This is the application of Running M Properties LLC. This is a portion of a larger parcel, and it's the parcel, the question, sorry, the acreage requesting to be rezoned is ten point zero four acres. It's currently zoned C-two, and they're requesting to go to R-two A, single-family residential district. The property is off of, south of Concord Drive, east of Fort Campbell Boulevard, and accessed by approximately two hundred and sixty feet south of Fort Campbell and Concord Drive intersections. It's a wooded tract with varying topography. This is in Council Ward number four. This is in the Lafayette-Peters Mill Planning Area. The applicant statement is to downzone from commercial multifamily and develop a single-family subdivision. This property has some history. Back in twenty twenty-one, it was currently a bit of C-five and R-one, and it requested to go to C-two. The planning commission staff recommended disapproval, but the planning commission and city council requested approval. That was only four years ago. Here's the future land use opinion map. The orange areas are the regional commercial of Fort Campbell, and then you have the darker yellow is mixed residential neighborhoods, and then you have the single suburban neighborhood in the lighter yellow, which the majority of this property is. And here's the current zoning. The dark blue is the C-five in the area, and then the light blue C-two parcel, which was, you can see that little piece. The owner's retaining that portion, which has access to the south towards Bel Air Boulevard. And the north, and I think it's in your packet. Yeah, there's a sketch in your packet of what the subdivision would look like on the piece of property. They do have an option on a property off of Concord, so the access would be to the north, not to the south of this property. In addition, you'll hear us mention there is a slight bit of FEMA floodplain on it. Just a couple percent of the property in that northwest corner, it does touch the FEMA floodplain. This area does drain to the Ashbury Sinkhole. Here is the area at Fort Campbell Boulevard. There's no access from here, but immediately to the left behind these properties is where this would be. It's not an easy property to get to currently. The tree stand back there is where the property starts. And that's looking off Concord, next to one of the commercial properties off Fort Campbell. The Clarksville Fire and Rescue asked at the time for a defined access point. The applicant provided that map, and they were okay with that answer. They did not want to come from the south off of Bel Air. Police department also asked, "Where was the access?" Street department has stated, "Existing drainage problems in the vicinity. Northwest corner of the property is a FEMA flood zone. Potential Blue Line stream is present on site. Existing drainage," yeah, they repeated that twice. We also have the school system comments for Kenwood Complex. Historical units on the R-two A would be forty-six, and just for, because this was asked at the planning commission, I believe you might have asked that, or another council member, commissioner asked about, "How many units can the C-two currently do?" And it was at the maximum a hundred and sixty, more like a hundred and twenty units. So that's when we say it's a downzoning. You're going from that potential down to about forty-six units. The applicant's sketch actually shows thirty-nine units because there is that drainage area and the Blue Line stream on there. The staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. The R-two A, single-family zone is more in alignment with the suburban neighborhood land use designation for the tract of land than the existing C-two general commercial district. The proposed R-two district. The proposed R two A zoning request removes the current commercial allowances and multifamily potential permitted in the C two commercial district from the tract that has drainage and topography encumbrances. The city of Clarksville Street Department has indicated that there are known drainage issues in the area. Any development of this parcel will require the developer to coordinate with the street department to address these concerns, and the planning commission also recommends approval.
Borrowing trouble. All right. Councilman Chikina, have you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mr. Tindall, you mentioned that the water is going to run to this Ashbury drainage. What's the capacity, do you know the capacity, or maybe Mr. Smith may know the capacity? Have we experienced any drainage or any field points with the Ashbury drainage so far with all the rain we've been getting this year, earlier in the year?
I can't answer the last part of that question, but as was mentioned earlier today, any future development of this would have to at least maintain or reduce the flow off this property to the north where it goes, and that will be handled by the street department.
Okay, Mayor. Can Mr. Smith come and answer that question?
Absolutely. Well, he can come try.
Yeah, he probably got the answer.
I'm sure he does.
He got the answer.
Councilman Chikina, have you recognized?
Sure. The Ashbury drainage.
Yes.
Have we experienced any field points, especially earlier the year with this, with this thing? What kind of problems? What's the history of this drainage retention?
So anybody that's been in the area of Ashbury Sinkhole, Saratoga and Fire Station Six, we saw the highest water levels out there, the water level in that area, just to the north, which is, which is where that sinkhole is, ultimately saw water very near the doorstep of Fire Station Six. It's a tremendous hole in the earth that takes an incredible sum of water. Pointed in any direction, north, south, east, west, some of our Concord, Alberta drive, all that sheds from all the way to Northwest High School towards the Ashbury Basin to the north across 101st sheds this way. We have water issues to the south towards Dave Drive, and then of course to the east towards Heritage Park, we have a number of features that are that way that ultimately have the capacity shed back to this same feature. So yes, loads of, loads of concerns.
So are there any plans then to do something about, you know, either deepen it or divert some water, or do, use some of the water on, you know, for something, right?
Well, there's no plan to touch the Ashbury Sinkhole. That's a FEMA mapped area, and if we impact the ability for the throat of that feature to flow, where the flooding problems are going to be exponentially worse. On this property, if you were to develop, our request would be very tall. I know that he's identified a number of units, but he's going to have to detain and retain a tremendous sum of water, maybe even beyond what he is producing himself on that site, which would limit the ability to develop to the full extent.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Tindall.
Thank you. Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tindall, I know you mentioned, because you said we could see from their sketch, could you talk about the fact that this is actually already come before the RPC?
They have dropped off that subdivision for review next month.
Okay.
It's part of a complicated land deal, but the applicant didn't want it rezoned unless the subdivision was applied for. So it's their risk to apply for it prior to second reading. We've taken those in the past. If it doesn't meet the zoning, and if this just doesn't, doesn't happen to pass, they'll just forfeit that. But as we mentioned, it is a downzoning, and you'll see something very similar. This sketch has not been reviewed. I think that's important to say, and also to Mr. Smith's point, this has not been reviewed for drainage, so it is a sketch by an engineering firm that knows the area, but there may be also a reduction in lots if they have to do additional retention or detention.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. To my colleagues, this, this is, it is a downgrade in the number of units that could be on there, but this is old Ward two. The water that actually flooded Kirby the last time goes under Fort Campbell Boulevard and drains across Concord Drive from this in Meadow Brook, and there are houses on there that that whole sinkhole comes from Ashbury and actually floods Meadow Brook and then portions of this property. So I'm glad that Mr. Smith is tracking that there would have to be some substantial work done. Also, the blue line stream that is on the Fort Campbell Boulevard side of this property is the reason that those buildings in the frontage of Fort Campbell Boulevard are not built back as far on their lots is because of the existing blue line stream in there. So there's a lot of water-related issues with this parcel, but it is a unit downgrade. So I'm just, just cautioning everybody that definitely there, I could imagine they would like, Mr. Smith said, they would lose several lots, because the water from West Bel Air and East Bel Air drains this way as well. So, yeah, that concludes my report. Thank you.
There's a reason it hasn't developed.
Exactly.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
So my concern would be if it was left as C two and they built apartments, they can have more concrete down than they can as if it's a R two?
Yes and no. They'll still have to retain and detain the water that's displaced. So they can put more concrete down, but they may have to do additional cut and detention on the property. So it's all, it's a sliding scale, you know.
So I'm just thinking, you know, with the single-family homes there, they'll have more grass.
There won't be as much impervious, correct?
Right. So, you know, it, I understand they'll still have to retain it all, but they may help, you know, with as much as they'd have to retain if we allowed the change.
And, you know, from, from what I heard from Mr. Smith is that they may have to go above and beyond the normal one-hundred-year rate for this detention.
Right. Thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding this zoning case? We're now ready for item E, ordinance one twelve, twenty-two-four twenty-five. Mr. Tindall, please, sir.
This is, it's been a bit, a long time coming. This was deferred last month at the planning commission to address one issue that we did address this past month. What we're referring to here is back in December, former representative from Ward number eight and Ward two's current representative, both passed resolutions to extend a similar overlay to the Madison Street and what had been extended last year, Martin Luther King Junior Parkway overlays along Fort Campbell Boulevard and Tiny Town Road. That was resolutions twenty-eight and thirty, twenty-four twenty-five. The planning commission then combined these efforts, since it was pretty much the same request, just two different areas. We have broken it down, though, kind of into two different areas, and I'll go over that in a second. We sent approximately five hundred and fifty letters out to the property owners, and we've held two informational sessions back in May seventeenth and eighteenth at Outlaw Field and Cleeman Recreation Centers. About thirty individuals attended those open houses, and we received approximately fifty calls on this topic over the course of the study. Our staff findings are this overlay implements several comprehensive plan policies about beautification, walkability, and commercial character, and setback flexibility. While the change may be slow on the redeveloping parcels, most new construction would follow these regulations already. The long-term effects will be an improved corridor. Some of these regulations are better made community-wide and may be included in future zoning updates. Couple notes for the council members, anything legally permitted or legally existing right now, both buildings and signs are grandfathered into these rules, and only when new materials, major reconstruction or new construction are taking place, will the building or signs have to be brought into compliance. Temporary signs, for instance, banners, streamers, balloons, et cetera, those will have to come down relatively quick after the ordinance gets passed, because those are considered temporary and not permanent. We're talking about the permanent signs here. Single-family homes are exempt from all design regulations. That's a city and a state rule, and then any signage will comply to new signs as the parcels, on the parcels as they were, are installed. And here's two maps of the area, and it's on your computers as well, about six or seven pages into the ordinance. We broke up the Fort Campbell area and the Tiny Town Road into different developable areas. We've done the same thing with Madison Street over the years when it was implemented. We have like the Hilldale area, the Richview area, the highway area, and we did something similar for both of these. So what we did in Fort Campbell, working south to north, we have the Dover Crossing area, then a Cunningham Concord area, an area we called Ringgold Mills, and then up towards Tiny Town in the state line, what we call the Gateway Area. We also have a highway and residential areas there in the middle in the darker blue. On Tiny Town, we also have a Gateway Area in the area that would be the gateway to the future Wings of Liberty Museum at that intersection. We have an Allen Road, Barker's Mill, Pembroke Tobacco, and a highway interchange and residential area as well. Important to note are the charts in the ordinance where in these sub-districts they require different setbacks, allow for different setbacks, arrange a little closer than the typical setback. It allows for or requires certain amount of glazing, which is windows on the first floor. It requires a minimum first floor height of fourteen feet. It does vary the stories a little bit, up to three and four stories, or in some places you'll allow only two or three stories. This is to match sort of what's in the area. And some of these areas have, are older areas from Clarksville that were vibrant at one time, and they were smaller parcels. So this allows these smaller parcels to potentially redevelop without having to meet some of the difficult current regulations on larger parcels. If you're in the highway residential or interchange districts, it goes back to your base zoning in these areas. These are just some pictures. These are some of the materials we used when we did outreach to the public on our website and both at the two meetings that we had. On the left here, this shows appropriate materials, metal, brick, stone, and the glass. On the right, these are materials that are limited use, so your primary building can't be these types of products, but you can use them as accents on your building. On this chart on the left, this is what we call discouraged. We can no longer quote prohibit, but is discouraged. As no, all these have to go through the Common Design Review Board, so if it came in with these materials, it would not get approved. Vinyl, mirrored glass, shiny metal, exposed metal, that kind of stuff. And then on the right is more about signage and trying to address some of the plethora of signage that is out there right now. One big difference between Madison Street and Fort Campbell and Tiny Town that we really looked into was the standing signs in front of the buildings. Right now, citywide, you can build a fifty-foot tall sign with two hundred square feet. That's very large. Madison Street limits that to twenty feet tall, fifty square feet. We took a survey of some of the more desirable signs up and down Fort Campbell Boulevard, and with the idea that this is a seven-lane highway, you want to be able to see that sign even when you're five or six lanes over in traffic. Twenty feet doesn't quite get it tall enough, so the future height for signs on Fort Campbell is thirty feet with a hundred square foot of signage, which is more tasteful than some things you have out there, and most of the signs do comply to that. I think I have a few other comments, and then I'll take any questions. Staff does recommend approval of this, as does the planning commission, as does the Common Design Review Board. The comprehensive plan policy statements for economic development state that increased walkability, beautification, and character in key commercial areas and corridors should be encouraged, high quality of mixed-use retail and development, or other key initiatives to improve aesthetics of our retail corridors. The comprehensive plan identifies gateway improvements in both North Clarksville and the Lafayette-Peters Mill planning areas. Participants in the zoning code rewrite process have consistently expressed a desire for streamlined development approvals that reduce complexity, delays, and costs. However, this ordinance does run counter to those priorities, but the overall goals of a better corridor do supersede that. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few concerns about it. You know, we're trying to get these hospitals to move here, and my concern is on Tiny Town with them wanting to build a hospital here and having a, you know, a four-story limit to the height that can reduce what the hospital could bring services-wise. You know, in fifty-foot-tall building, maybe the hospital wants to provide more services, and we're going to tell them, sorry, you can't go up higher to do that. Another concern is the setback. If they have to build within fifty feet of the roadway, we're going to put that hospital up close to the road. You know, the smaller businesses, you know, I don't see as much of an issue with it. You know, most hospitals have parking on, some on the front of it, that's going to require them on the side or the back. I know Tenova has some on the sides also in the back. And then another concern is, it says only one freestanding sign per parcel. Most hospitals have several entrances, so they're going to be only able to put one sign out there, and everybody's going to be turning at that sign where, you know, they may have another entrance that is for emergencies, you know, to come into an ER where this entrance is going to be for, you know, regular visits, but they'll only be able to put one sign. So those are some of the concerns I have on it. Am I misreading it?
No, I can answer some of those. So first of all, we started this back in January and February before we even knew that hospitals were even another opportunity here. The, all of this ordinance is adjudicated by the Common Design Review Board. So first of all, a hospital, any hospital that's built is probably going to be built with high-quality materials and meet our requirements. If they need to go higher, which right now in the C five district, they can only go up to thirty-five feet, so this actually gives them a little more height, unless they go up to four stories, which they may or may not, we may, may be bumping up against that fifty feet, they can ask the BZA or the Common Design Review Board to go higher than that, and I don't think we would be objectionable to that for a hospital. As far as signage goes, you get one per parcel, correct? If you're a corner lot, you get one per corner, one per street on that corner. If they happen to need another one, and these are the, these are the identifying signs. These are not the enter here, emergency there. Those are all, we would consider those inconsequential. Those are to the flow around the site. But one, one or two big signs that says, I forget which is this, TriStar on this site, you know, TriStar Medical Center, would be allowed on this site, and if it does, and I personally don't know where it is on site yet. I've not seen a plan. I know it's somewhere in the middle of that magenta color there. It may not even be on the frontage of Tiny Town Road. If it was a parcel back, we would work with them, we would work with them regardless of, as they come in, because I'm not sure our current regulations for C five would also match what a hospital may need.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So, Mr. Tindall, I know we spoke earlier about this, and I did reach out, as I told you to a couple different departments about this situation, and it does pertain to the setbacks, so that the rest of the council is aware. There is concern that lowering it so dramatically, it would hinder future infrastructure improvements such as road winding, utility, stormwater routes. And I did, as I said, I did reach out to a few of the department heads on it, and they kind of agreed that it's, we may need to change some of those numbers.
So again, we currently have some zones. R six is an example that allows zero front setback if you park it at the side or the rear. Anytime any of these applications, though, come to us for a site plan or subdivision, it does get circulated to the other departments, and if gas and water, or the street department says, we have a pipe there, we have electric there, we have water there, we need an easement, or we have an easement, we're not going to encroach on that. So though this may say ten, five, fifteen feet as low as, it also goes as high as fifty or thirty-five feet. So we would work within those parameters, and again, we're not going to encroach on TDOT or the city or the county's easements or need for easements in these areas. That's, that's how it works right now on Madison Street.
Yeah, it's just that it just seems like, looking on, let's go to Fort Campbell, with some of them being like minimum setback, like ten feet, for example, whereas some of the setbacks along Fort Campbell can be fifty feet. So then, that like, that's a huge difference in what's on paper compared to what we'll eventually end up being. And I guess it's, it may not be clear in that regard that while there's these other parameters that have to also be taken into account.
That's why we have the development review process, so every, everything that comes through goes through the process to make sure that we're not all stepping on each other's toes. It's an allowance, but then anytime you build anything, you always have to know about TVA lines or blue line streams, and everything has buffers. That's why our code is two hundred and fifty pages long.
All right. Okay, well, I'll get with you, and we'll discuss this further.
Councilman Chikina, have you recognized?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Tindall, just to clarify, because you did mention it regarding the setbacks, that this is minimum, and then you have the Board of Zoning Appeals, that your case is on variances every month. So just to, just for the benefit of the council, there is another entity that actually listens to request every month on variances for setbacks. I just wanted to point that out.
Councilman Brown, you're recognized.
Just one follow-up on the easement. Is that measured from, or the setbacks? Is that measured from, or the setbacks, is that measured from the road, or is it measured from the property line? Or if there's an easement for gas and water, is that measured from where that easement ends?
That's a good question. The road width is not always the right-of-way width. We're measuring it from where the right-of-way and the parcel are, or from the side parcel line. So setbacks are from the parcel lines. If the easement is in that area, it would be in the setback, which is desirable to just be in that front yard area or under the driveway or parking area. If it happens to be a wide easement, most easements are five, ten feet. If it's a fifteen or twenty-foot, just because the pipe is so deep, or it has multiple utilities in it, it'll just keep pushing that building further back. We don't allow building over easements.
Right. Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Tindall and his staff for all their efforts on this, and for getting it back on track with the timeline that we had requested, and meeting the request of having two public meetings so that people didn't have to travel from the farthest distance to the other farthest distance to attend. And I appreciate answering all the questions. I think that was helpful, but I do appreciate everything you've all done to see these come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Tindall, question. If the council decides they want to try to amend this ordinance, it would go back to the Regional Planning Commission? Is that the posture it would be in?
Yes, and I'm sure the city attorney would agree. Any material change to any ordinance would have to go back to the Planning Commission to just go back through the process again, even if it's a minor change. That's what the state law does say.
So setback, sign height, material, that would be considered material change?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other comment or question regarding this ordinance? We're now ready?
Just, if you have any other questions, definitely come and call us, email us. We will help answer any questions, and I think I can be here next Thursday night for the meeting.
Don't come Thursday, because we won't be here.
Tuesday, that's right, Tuesday.
I mean, you're welcome to come.
That's right.
We'll be down at the park watching fireworks, all right. We're now ready for item F, Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two-four-twenty-five. Mr. Tindall?
All right, Mayor, without objection, I'll talk about Resolution sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one as one. As you know, when plans of service are done after annexations, there's a six-month follow-up. If all items have not been completed in the plan of service, it gets extended up to a year. The only item after the first six months for all these annexations was the extension of broadband and electricity from CDE. I have correspondence with them, that electric and broadband has now been extended to all these parcels, so all other items, including emergency services, et cetera, have been extended to these parcels. So these are what we call final plans of service, saying the city has come through with their obligation as part of the annexation, and these are fully within the city limits. The properties are Hancock Road, east of International Boulevard, off Exit Eight there. Resolution seventy is on Garrettsburg Road and Clyde Court. And then Resolution seventy-one was also near the industrial park, east of International Boulevard, to include the city police department, EMS station, and the fire station out there. I'd be happy to answer any questions. These do require public hearings.
Questions for Mr. Tindall regarding Resolutions sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one. All right, Mr. Tindall. All right, thank you. We're now ready for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council, and may be approved by one motion. However, a member of the council may request that an item be removed for separate consideration under the appropriate committee report. Ordinance eighty-three, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, second reading, an ordinance amending the official code of the City of Clarksville, Title Four, Building Utility and Housing Codes, Chapter Six, Property Maintenance Code, to provide needed updates, add provisions regarding penalties, and clarify requirements for property maintenance in commercial and residential zones. Ordinance eighty-five, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, second reading, an ordinance amending Title Two, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter One, Beer, and the official city code to amend Section Two dash one-zero-five, Classes of Permits, Subparagraph Four, Special Events Permit. Ordinance eighty-six, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Audrey Short-Rostine for a zone change on a parcel fronting on the south frontage of Tiny Town Road, three-hundred-and-thirty-five plus or minus feet east of Pembroke Road and Tiny Town Road, from A Airport to C-five Highway and arterial commercial district. An ordinance, Ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance and map of the City of Clarksville, application of Meon Holdings LLC for a zone change on a lot fronting on the west frontage of Industrial Drive, three-hundred-and-ninety plus or minus feet north of the West Dunbar Cave Road and Industrial Drive intersection, from M-one Light Industrial District to C-five Highway and arterial commercial district. Resolution seventy-two, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, a resolution approving appointments to the Power Board and Board of Zoning Appeals. Resolution seventy-four, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, a resolution approving a certificate of compliance for sale of wine in a food store at Quick Stop Market located at six-thirty Tiny Town Road, and the adoption of minutes from June fifth and June twelfth.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any question or comment regarding the consent agenda? We are now ready for the Finance Committee Report. Chairman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Without objection, can I read the next five together and just cover them at once?
You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance ninety-eight, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Whitetail Development Partnership Property to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance ninety-nine, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from CBP Properties to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one-hundred, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Holly Point LLC to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Ordinance one-oh-one, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from The Main Street Investments, TNGP, to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. And ordinance one-oh-two, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from The River Chase LLC to the City of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. The Finance Committee voted in favor of approval of all five of these ordinances, and these are the typical run-of-mill that we've done before, where they donate it back for the sewer pump stations that they have built in the area.
Questions regarding these five ordinances. Chairman Streitman.
Thank you, sir. For the next three, also, if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have Ms. Michelle Austin come up here and talk about them. She discussed them perfectly in the Finance Committee, and I know it's something that she's worked on and been excited about.
Without objection. Ms. Austin?
Ordinance one-oh-four, twenty-two-four, first, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Montgomery County Habitat for Humanity. The Finance Committee voted in favor of approval.
Ms. Austin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I'm pulling up the right one. So ordinance one-oh-four, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, I won't go into detail reading the entire ordinance for you, but just to share a little bit about what this entails, we are requesting your approval to negotiate and enter into an agreement to purchase two lots with the intent to donate them to Habitat for Humanity. These two lots are located on Ford Street. Habitat for Humanity is, as you know, a trusted organization who provides affordable housing to our low-income residents here in Clarksville. Just to clarify, the families that are, go through this long application process and are vetted for this program, once they qualify, they put in sweat equity, they go through classes, and then they also apply for and obtain a mortgage for this low-cost home. So our intent is to use our Home Investment Partnership entitlement funds to purchase these lots, donate them to Habitat, to remove some of the costs associated with developing these homes. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Thank you. Chairman Stre- oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Markey, you're recognized.
Sure, real quick, because I know the three ordinances do use those funds. How much did the city receive in them?
Home investment funds?
Yes.
We receive about five-hundred thousand each year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Streitman.
Ordinance one-oh-five, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter into an agreement for the acquisition of real property for the purpose of providing transitional housing for families participating in the CMCS families in transition program. Finance Committee also voted in favor of approval of this one.
Ms. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, this is another ordinance to request your approval to negotiate and enter into an agreement to purchase. If you're not familiar with the CMCS Families in Transition Program, these are children and families who are experiencing, they're in transition of some sort. They have some sort of housing insecurity. Some of them are living on, staying on couches. There's so many different variables that land children and their families in this program. They are currently working with Irene Center for Hope as a referral program to get their students and families into housing. They've been successful in getting some of those families already into some permanent housing. Others are using some of our community block grant funds and emergency services funds to pay for hotel rooms, and those are low-cost hotel rooms, and I'm not going to list some of the places that are, that they're using, but this is a quadplex that would allow those families to have a two-bedroom townhome for them to immediately enter and kind of get their lives back on track while the organization works to put them into some permanent housing. So our plan is to obtain this property and then work through an agreement with the nonprofit to serve those clients.
Councilman Streitman.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just would like to say, and this goes for all three of these, but I really wanted to say it on this one, I'm so grateful for all of the work that you have done on this, and also, especially this one, I can attest to Ms. Austin, you know, being on this committee, she has talked about having a lot of concern for these students that are going through this in their lives. So I'm excited to see this really come to fruition, and again, grateful for all that you've done on all of these, but especially this one, to be able to help out some families in our area and these students.
Councilman Zacharias?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to ask you to vote a certain way on this, I'm just going to ask that if you are thinking of voting against this resolution, or I'm sorry, this ordinance, please talk to a teacher, all right? Ask them how many students they have in their class that are in this program. Doesn't matter what side of town they're on, the answer's going to surprise you, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Streitman.
Ordinance one-oh-six, twenty-two-four-twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and enter into an agreement for the purchase of real property for the purpose of constructing affordable housing in partnership with Appalachian Service Project. Again, the Finance Committee recommended, voted in favor of approval.
Ms. Austin?
Thank you. So again, this is a purchase of another lot to provide affordable housing for people in need. You may not be aware, but not everybody in our community has fully stood up from the tornado that devastated us in December of twenty-twenty-three. We have three families that have yet to rebuild. Appalachian Service Project is committed to come in and build up to twenty homes in our community this year. We have two homes that are already under construction. I would invite you to find out more about those projects, because it's really beautiful. But they've also committed to helping some of our tornado survivors who were in rental housing at the time. Those families are now ready to stand up and own their own home, so they are working with those families now. We just need to find lots for them. So this one parcel would actually provide three lots for housing for tornado survivors, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Ms. Austin. Thank you. Chairman Streitman.
Mayor, to quote the councilman from Ward Two with her famous line, "That concludes my report."
All right. Thank you very much. We are now ready for Gas and Water Committee. Chairman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
I'll have a report on Tuesday.
Thank you. Neighborhood and Community Services Chairman Shakina.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a report on Tuesday.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman Zacharias.
Thank you, Mayor. I also will have a full report on Tuesday, but in the meantime, I would like to invite everybody to join us for Rhythm Reels, where we will, I'm sorry, I did this in the wrong order. All right, so on Saturday, the twenty-eighth, you can enjoy the Downtown Market from eight to twelve. You can enjoy Frontier Life at Fort Defiance from ten to two. And then, if you have not yet gotten enough of the heat, you can join us at Heritage Park for Rhythm and Reels at seven-thirty and watch Sonic Three and enjoy some live music. And on that note, if you see anybody out there wearing a Parks and Rec shirt, thank them for the job that they're doing. It is hot out there, and they are doing their best. Also, while we are here, Summer Night Lights will be going on. The theme is "Party in the USA." That is on the first of July at Ringgold Elementary from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And that concludes my report.
Councilman Streitman.
I have a question for the chairman. Seeing as we are in such heat, and that would be such a hot day, is there anything that Parks and Recreation might have to offer that people could use to cool down?
Is this a polar plunge reference?
No, it's not a polar plunge, but wouldn't that be nice right about now? But we probably have some great pools and splash pads in the area that they could come out and cool off and enjoy.
Well, yeah, they're going to be at these other events.
But afterwards.
All right, on Sunday, you can go to the splash pad.
Okay, does that conclude your report, Senator?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're now ready for the Public Safety Committee. Chairman Lovato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I will have a full report on Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. The Transportation Streets Garage Committee Chairman Smith will have a full report next Tuesday. Under New Business, you've got a preview at the beginning of this meeting, the public lottery drawing pertaining to the Retail Liquor Store Certificates of Compliance. We'll have a resolution containing eleven lottery drawing winners that we will have before you, and we'll vote. Any questions regarding New Business? Okay, we're now ready for public comments. Any member of the public wish to address the council? We have three, room for three people, if you would, two or three of you come forward, give us your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Chelsea Carlyle, Mayor, council members. Before I begin, you'll notice I've taken off my red shirt. Tonight, I don't want to be seen as just another red shirt in the crowd. I don't want to be categorized or dismissed before I even open my mouth. I'm asking you to see me for who I am, a human being, a contributing member of this city, and someone who deeply cares about the people who serve it. I want to be heard, not as a symbol, not as a spouse, but just as me. I'd like to thank each of you who has taken the time to read and respond to emails. I know your responsibilities don't end when you leave this building. I genuinely appreciate your time and your willingness to listen. That being said, I didn't come here tonight to give you a hard time. I came here because I care. I speak to you this evening not out of anger, but out of deep concern, concern shared by many in this community, and certainly by the men and women of Clarksville Fire Rescue. We understand the budget season was demanding, the timing has been fast, the process intense, but what's been most disheartening is the lack of acknowledgement, dialogue, or response to the concerns raised by your firefighters in this community. Silence does not fix things, it does not build trust. Let me be clear, our firefighters are not asking for some extravagant demand. Their requests are measured, they're reasonable, and they're rooted in fairness. They're asking to be acknowledged, to be heard, to earn a living wage that's comparable to neighboring departments of similar size and stature, to have a structured step-pay plan that creates transparency, equity, and sustainability, so they can support their families while continuing to serve Clarksville with pride. Now that the budget's officially on paper, I'm asking that we don't stop here. Let's use this as the foundation for what comes next. Let's open the door to honest and ongoing conversations. Because progress doesn't come from silence, it comes from sitting at the table together. Let's work together over the next year to truly understand what's needed to build a stronger, more sustainable future for Clarksville Fire Rescue, not just for the next budget, but for the generations of firefighters who will come after. Mayor, I close with this. Consider the legacy you want to leave, not just with Clarksville Fire Rescue, but with the city as a whole. Let it be more than your name outside of the classroom at headquarters. Let it be a legacy of action, respect, and collaboration. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to address the council? Anyone else wish to address the council? If you would, give us your name, and you have five minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Luther Hutchison. I'm here on behalf of Hassan Temple, number one-fifty, an orgi- a fraternal organization of Prince Hall Shriner's here in Montgomery County, Clarksville. And we have organized a monthly charity walk for support, awareness, and donations raised for diabetes, the American Diabetes Association. And I guess my ask here is, I've been in communication with Parks and Recreation, and we would like to open this up to the public. And it's considered a public, if we open it up to the public, it's considered a public event. And certain events, public events have to be in certain parks, certain venues. And so we are proposing, or we have opened it up to friends and family in Bel Air Park. That's a centralized location. It has a paved park that's a half-mile in distance, and we're asking walkers to come out, pledge for diabetes, and walk either a half-mile or a full mile in support of diabetes. Again, it's a paved park, great park and centralized location. It's open to where, you know, passerby's can, can be attracted to this cause. And, and we want to know if what we're doing, because we're not raising any money, we're not bringing in any vendors, we are just trying to bring awareness and support for a cause. And so we, we, I want clarification of whether or not that is a public event. And if that is so, is there a process to where I can get special approval to use that park as a public event and not just for friends and family? But we, walkers come out and they pledge, and they can bring any denomination as a pledge, and it goes directly to the American Diabetes Association. And we have shirts available at twenty dollars each. We take out all the costs, and every, all the net proceeds go to the American Diabetes Association. So we're not bringing any, we're not making any money off of this cause. We just want to bring awareness and support for the American Diabetes Association. So again, what our ask is, is can we use that park as a public event for what we're doing? And if, if, if there is some special consideration that is needed, what is the process to be able to use that park for this event?
Ms. Hutchison, you'll have to meet with the Parks and Recreation Department Director, and I'd be glad to facilitate that.
Yes, sir. Last thing, Mayor Pitts, is we just want to know your size, because our temple did want to make sure you had one of these shirts at no cost to you.
So I have to go on record in public telling you my size?
[laughing]
Yeah. I'm a large, I'm a large, Lisa. And I'll wear it proudly. Thank you. I'll be, I'll be glad to pay for it as well.
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. But that's all. And I'll definitely get with the director. Thank you.
Any other comment from the public to the council? All right, we're now ready for Mayor and Councilmember comments. Councilman Streitman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to mention that just a couple of weeks ago, on June twelfth, our community lost a great member. Pastor Mark Totten, who was the pastor for Grace Bible Church here in Clarksville, passed away suddenly. And I know that it's been a, a hard loss to especially his church, but the many friends that he had built up here. He was involved with leadership of Clarksville. He's been involved with a lot of different things with our community, and he's been a source of information, inspiration, advice, a lot of different things. But he's been a good friend to many of people, and I know he's going to be greatly missed. And I know that on July twelfth, there will be a remembrance of him. So if you knew Mark Totten, please look up the information on him. I know he would love to have everyone be there to celebrate his life. And without a doubt, even though we'll be missing him, I know he is absolutely in a better place and enjoying life where he is too. So, thank you.
Councilman McLaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that my town hall meeting will be on Monday, June thirtieth, five-thirty PM, at the Clarksville Police Precinct, District One, on Cunningham Lane. All are welcome. It doesn't matter if you live in the city or county. But we're shifting it because we have our meeting on the first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comment or question from the council? Thank you very much. We are adjourned. See you next Tuesday.